Good afternoon.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna start, it's time. This is the Kingston Rent Guidelines Board. It is one oh four P M on Saturday, June twenty first, twenty twenty five. And I'm calling this public hearing to order. As a reminder, we will be inviting members of the public and interested parties to provide testimony for this board as it decides what adjustment to make in in the rents for leases subject to E T P A, which commenced between October first, twenty twenty five and September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. You're welcome to speak at this meeting today. And we also take written feedback or written testimony sent to our email address, which is Kingston R G B at H C R dot N Y dot gov. We are going to limit speakers to three minutes for people who are individuals and to five minutes for people who are representing an organization. We have a sign up list right here that we will start with. And we will leave room for more folks to sign up if you would like. I haven't called role, so we're gonna call role. Noah Kipley Augman, that's me, I'm present.
Diana.
Here.
Arlene. Lee is not here. Uh, Mia.
Here.
Junior is not here and sends his regrets and Carol.
Here.
Love it. Um, without further ado, I'd like to start with our speakers who have signed up. Uh, and I want to remind you, it's helpful if you speak into the mic. And uh, thank you for coming. Jenna Goldstein.
I'm speaking on behalf of the four of the many side five rooms.
Perfect.
Good afternoon, Kingston Rent Guidelines Board. I want to start by thanking this board for taking all the data, information and testimony into account to make their decisions. The continued effort to make rent fair in the city is long. Since this is the only time the D H C R unveils themselves to tenants that presence here, I want to speak to them too. I'm here on behalf of the organization for the many where I work as an ulcer counting baby organizer. At Jesus Public Carrying fourteen tenants and one landlord spoke. That landlord Vince Focaro, ninety one Main Street says interesting things to the board. What was the rent since building at ninety one Main Street or fifteen dollars per month? We then heard from two tents of building who are paying seventy sixty five and eighteen sixty five. Well, that was with Carl lying, but he raised rent seventy six point five from right there on March twenty twenty. But Carl also mentioned that he bought this building with his current savings. Why does this landlord believe that he should especially have a secret hiding? A luxury that most of us do not enjoy, just like most of us will not be aware of it on property. He then claims to operating costs are up, so he can arrange a rent, tenors rent. However, this M L S report shows he actually paid hundred thousand dollars below the asking price. And the valuation is equal to two hundred thousand. About two. Thank you. May I suggest that Mr. Focaro budget his money better, maybe stop buying homes if you cannot afford to maintain them. The property at ninety one Main Street has a laundry room on site. Mr. Focaro locked the door to that room, breaking another E T P A law, state service and amenities cannot be decreased in service or increased in price. He'd rather let machines rot and break than provide me food service terms off the market revenue. The building is not upgraded since nineteen fifty according to those they bring that you have in hand. I don't want to unfairly call Mr. Focaro out because he is a sole landlord who showed up Tuesday and had a lot of options. I am doing this to show that landlords will lie within puberty because they are inherently greedy people who forward housing and rents back to working class tenants, especially when there are seemingly no consequences for doing so. Furthermore, D H C R reported the landlord operating costs were down while they popped up through thirty year row. I know that I've held tenants submit at least one hundred twelve R A's to seventy six F M R A's since twenty twenty two. It's good there's already a process via a third party for a chance to report to. However, the R A process is inherently flawed, is a system based on fifty one year old law for a city, three hundred forty eight times our yearly Kingston. With such a small universe, it would seem extremely manageable for D H C R, a state agency to enforce E T P A. Additionally, the forms asked for information, which does not apply to Kingston, so R A's may appear valid. Here are some handouts showing what the portal looks like and some examples of the errors within the portal at the rare time that it does work. It's no wonder that tenants give up with what we're trying to do to jobs before they're in government. They don't have time or energy attempting to decipher the process or wait years for reserve rent relief. Tenants are too scared of violation intimidation to self reduce their rent without backup. At the very least, you owe all E T P A tenants a one page mailer to simply explain these sort of things and retrain sessions. Earlier this year, I asked Mayor Noble if he believes Kingston had a house emergency, and he said yes. When I asked what he would say in his situation, if it's certainly vacancies that you were sure to rate higher than five percent, he had no answer. So if tenants, neighbors, common council, even the mayor agree there is a house emergency, or the justification for regaring E T P A or raising the rates, I can only think of one, to further enrich landlords, most of which don't reside in the city of Kingston. Working class folks make our city vibrant, diverse and functional. Without them, who will work your favorite restaurant, make your coffee or sign a card or drink? Tenants should be not help, should not be health financially responsible for landlords or management. I'm calling on D H C R to expedite all R A's made by Kingston tenants to fix R A's funds to apply to Kingston tenants and open offices in Kingston per E T P A statute eight and to send a one page mailer regarding the overcharge process. I trust this very formal board will vote for rent freeze and will encourage D H C R to review their protocol. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. I have a request, which is I would appreciate it if you could email your written testimony to the email address because it was too dense for me to understand each of the like key things that you were saying, and I want time to to study it. Do we have questions for Jenna?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you just explain to us like on the sheet, uh, what do you want us to take from the highlight?
That the rent was, was the rent in the apartments were under twelve hundred dollars and some gives us nine sixty in March of twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, sorry. The building was bought then and the rents were raised, which is legal to raise up on transia seventy six point five percent, but decrease is that's even worth of a reduction, right? Because the we were price guiding hearing. That's just shit ones that bought his property. He raised rent stays with point five percent, all tenants there. And it's just, I'm only calling him out because he stood up and spoke, no landlords spoke, I'm trying to find the polls and all landlords are making if they just spoke. Yeah, so it's kind of M L S, so you guys can see like how much it was raised and how much it valued it actually, because he said validation was down, that is false, up to two hundred grand.
Thank you.
Yeah, any more questions?
I also wonder if he could talk us through some of the portal issues.
I would love to. The portal is unusable at best and it regularly um returns the screens I put in screenshot there, which is the blank screen without any way to proceed to the next screen or anything like that. Um, and also like, I'll put number one seventy six says enter number two one sixty, one eighty. I'm like, I did, but you're registering it. And when it comes with those, with those computer errors, you can't move past that screen, so it just nullifies the whole R A. Which I wonder why landlords are saying that they're, why D H C R said they're not receiving R A's from Kingston? Because I personally have submitted over one hundred and twelve of them, so I know there are R A's out there. So I don't know if it's their fault, the internal system or not, but they need to have some accountability with the process for sure.
Thank you.
Uh, sorry, R A's are.
Oh, yeah, the R A is what you fill out on D H C R, you have a problem with your little wins on dressing, so an R A eighty nine is what load hard, R A eighty one is for service being decreased, H H W one is for heating hot water not working. The R A process is a third party process that D H C R hosts, so tenants can go to a board that that represents a fair, supposedly impartial jury at least, because the landlord doesn't want to have any chances, saying you deal with the alcohol doing, and they hope the alcohol doing increases, they want them to move out, so they raise R A legally. So that's what R A process is so crucial, so you have a third party in place to actually assess the complaints, actually enforce them.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions?
Oh, and could you, could you say again, I couldn't quite hear when you were talking about the one page mailer, calling on D H C R to send a mailer about how to use the portal or?
The portal is for, I would never encourage them to use it. Um, I, D H C R owes this, the, the city of Kingston, a mailer, a sustained one page mailer that says like, the reduction has been upheld, we're all of the present reduction. Here's your recourse options, step one, two and three, not this like largely opaque process that no one quite understands.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Jenna.
Thank you for your time, Mark.
Uh, Bridget Kelly.
Um, thank you to the Kingston Rent Guidelines Board for holding this public comment meeting. My name is Bridget Kelly, I'm a tenant at six seventy two Broadway and E T P A building registered with D H C R in which my landlord is not abiding by E T P A regulations. I'm also a public school teacher and a union leader. I have lived at six seventy two Broadway since July of twenty eighteen and in the current unit that I reside in since December twenty twenty one. My rent for this current unit was first raised in December of twenty twenty three with a four point two percent increase and again was raised another eight percent beginning October twenty twenty four. I was not aware until after I resigned the lease in twenty twenty four that our building did in fact qualify for E T P A, as none of my leases since August of twenty twenty two have had the E T P A addendum. I was left not knowing how to manage the system, what I could do about it, or what I was entitled to, and with a neighbor that was scared of our landlord and did not want to rock the boat further. They had reported that he would yell at them for reporting issues with their unit and was repeatedly told that they should just move out because he was going to sell the building. Over the winter, three units other than mine all began to experience a mice issue. And when I was informed by two of the affected tenants that they were being told it was their fault or that they kept the apartment dirty, I had to look up the county health regulations that stated it was in fact the landlord's responsibility to mitigate the pests and had to send him the code and insist he take care of it. It may the same neighbor shared with me that the landlord was trying to raise their rent by a hundred and fifty dollars and that they wanted to move out so that they weren't going to fight it. After all this, finding out he wasn't holding up E T P A, his treatment of fellow tenants and continued rent hikes, I became resolved that I needed to take this on and began researching what I needed to do. On June tenth, via email, I was notified by the landlord that he wanted to increase my rent by another eight percent, which would be twenty one point five percent on what the rent should have been frozen at and does not figure in the fifteen percent reduction. I responded respectfully with a letter citing the E T P A and requesting a two year lease at the rent from twenty twenty two. He responded that the building is exempt. I asked him for proof of that exemption and he said he didn't need it. I am going to be proceeding with the rent overcharge complaint with D H C R and I am respectfully requesting that the Rent Guidelines Board hold the rent freeze at zero percent. Tenants like myself with landlords that are blatantly ignoring or obfuscating to avoid the law have not even seen the benefit of the law come to fruition, all while the cost of living for working people has risen. I will never be able to save for homeownership myself if my income ends up going towards rent and I certainly don't have a second home in Florida like my landlord where he was when the mice issue happened in December. I'm a public servant who believes in standing up for working people and their rights. I use my voice to advocate for my members, my students and our communities. And I do this as part of my job, I know that I cannot be retaliated against because of my protective union action. But in speaking up and advocating for tenant rights for myself and my neighbors in the building, I could make my home, which should be my sanctuary, an uncomfortable situation or face retribution. I believe in tenant rights and the power of my voice, and so it's time to take that risk.
Thank you, Bridget. I'm sorry.
Questions?
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I have a question, so you said that your landlord claimed that uh, his, he was exempt from E T P A.
Due to the renovations he did when he bought the building, that's what he is claiming. But did, he's applied for it, but I have been told by the city it has not been granted as of yet.
Okay. Okay, um, so he's definitely, he's not exempt.
He's not exempt currently now, and the building is registered on the registration website.
Okay. Um, and are you rent burdened? Um, meaning like, do you have to pay more than thirty percent of your income, monthly income?
I, I have not actually figured out the exact numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, have you had confrontations with your landlord?
Um, there's been a lot of passive aggressive emails that have begun, um, and then this week, um, he hadn't responded to that letter that I sent. Um, and when I, you know, I asked him respectfully because he's always inserted my um, air conditioner and insisted on doing it himself. Um, and I said, hey, it's going to get hot, I'd really like my air conditioner installed, that's when he finally responded to my certified letter about rent and then didn't respond about the air conditioner. And then yesterday morning sent me passive depressive message with a YouTube video about the renovations that he had done on the building, and so I respectfully said in the text message back that I would like to keep text messaging to building uh, and unit issues, um, I E my uh, A C installation. And he said, oh, he's got back issues and that he would like me to get someone else to do it, which I said, fine, I just wanted your written permission in order to get my unit installed, thank you.
Any questions?
I actually, I, I don't know if you mentioned, I'm sorry. Uh, but what do you think, well, what are you asking this board for?
Um, I mean, I'm asking for the, the rent freeze to stay at zero percent, and I know that while I may be on the borderline of whether or not I am encumbered in, I know that some of the other tenants in my building and I am also working to advocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Sima. Witnessee, and you're gonna have to help me on pronunciation.
Hello, my name is Sarah Sizmazia and I live at one eighty West Chestnut Street, an E T P A complex called Chestnut Mansion. I've been living there for three years. My rent is seventeen fifty, not including utilities, which is a hundred percent of my income. This excessively high rent for my one bedroom apartment has made it progressively harder for me to stay in my home in Kingston. My landlord has not reduced my rent following the board's fifteen percent rent reduction. Even after the lawsuit the landlords uh, did against E T P A was upheld in the highest court on Wednesday, I still got my same E bill for next month's rent with the same exorbitant rate. Not to mention the never ending, uh, sorry, not to mention never receiving an E T P A rider with my lease documents, nor have I been offered a chance to resign my lease after my original lease had expired. That's two years now without an active lease. Chestnut Mansion has not followed any of the E T P A laws. I started my rent overcharge case with D H C R in September of last year. The first two responses from them contain incorrect information, which then they fixed on the third try. Every couple of months, D H C R sends me mail asking for more rent receipts. They have done this three times with no info on where my case stands or when we will make a judgment. It has been nine months of working with my lawyer to give all the proof I have to D H C R and nothing has come from my time and efforts, which has left me feeling defeated and hopeless. I am extremely privileged to have the ability to work with a lawyer and have had the time to gather all of my documents and receipts every couple of months upon demand. Most of my neighbors do not have the time to do so. They work three plus jobs to be able to barely scrape by and they don't have time to waste on a never ending process with no guarantee of getting results. By the way, I filed my R A through certified mail because the portal was down. Today, I call on D H C R to properly investigate and enforce relevant violations of New York's housing laws and for D H C R to review statute eight of E T P A, which states D H C R must have an office in every county that has E T P A. The new office in Poughkeepsie does not align with statute eight. I would like an office here and around Kingston, so I can easily go there and ask, hey, what's going on with my case? I'm also calling on the board to pass a rent freeze to prevent rents from increasing even further and to help me and my neighbors stay in our homes, especially since majority of renters across Kingston have never seen the rent reduction that we are owed from last. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Any questions?
No, I, I would love, I really appreciate your updating us on the process of filing various complaints and I would appreciate if you would keep us posted about how this process goes. I understand that it's frustrating and I too would like for implementation of E T P A to be effective.
Yes.
And it sounds like that's a reasonable request.
Yes, following the law, a reasonable request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Um, could you say again, but you had uh, some specific asks for D, D H C R? Uh, could you repeat those?
Yeah, number one, I would like statute eight of E T P A be followed, so they're proposing a new uh, office uh, in Poughkeepsie, but Poughkeepsie is pretty far from here. And also, I don't think Poughkeepsie has E T P A, so it's kind of odd that they would opt in or they would uh, set up an office there and not here or around Kingston. I think the only uh, upstate municipality that has E T P A. Um, so I think that's really bizarre in a way to like make it harder for us in Kingston to actually use those services. Shh. And uh, the other ones that I would like them to do is I would like them to give a clear timeline on how long an R A is going to take, even just in the mailer requesting for more information to say, hey, we're still working on it, other than asking you for the same thing uh, four months in a row with no update on what you're even using it for. And I would like them to actually investigate the properties that aren't sending out the E T P A riders that aren't following the law and that aren't doing the fifteen percent uh, rent reductions that we were owed from last time.
Can I also ask, are you rent burdened?
Yes, extremely so.
Has your building um, or your apartment been maintained or upgraded?
No, my building has not been upgraded. Um, my building is worse for wear, I do say our new super, this is in the three years I've been there, our ninth super is really great this time and he does really good work. But he also works on seven other properties and he has, uh, he's the super to over, I think, five hundred different units. So the timeline on getting repairs is definitely not speedy.
Um, have you ever missed a rent payment?
I have never missed a rent payment.
What do you think would happen if you did?
I'd be kicked out immediately and then I'd be homeless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to add that, um, I understand having filed those things, I, you know, I understand completely how overwhelming and, and difficult it is to have no idea what's going on, just submit the same information over and over again.
It's, it's a, you get your home set every single time you get a mail and then every single time it says the same thing, you're like, oh, okay. I guess I'll print out my receipts again. Yeah, it's tough.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, June Neiman.
Hello, is everyone here me? Wonderful. Uh, my name is June Neiman, I'm a tenant organizer. Uh, I've been working with tenants of Stony Run, but also throughout Kingston uh, since before, since twenty twenty two. Uh, first, I just want to thank all of you for voting for the fifteen percent rent reduction several years ago, which we finally won in court uh, this past week, which is a huge, huge win for tenants here in Kingston and throughout the state because it sets a precedent. And I just want to remind the public, the reason why you did that, which is that in the five years preceding that vote, rent had doubled here in the city of Kingston. And today, tenants are still paying those egregiously high rents, right? Tenants have seen no relief despite the fact that we, you know, won this rent reduction and have been keeping the rent frozen in most buildings, except for of course, some landlords who have been flagrantly violating the law. Um, and yeah, landlords will continue to violate the law and they're going to continue to try to not follow this law and not give people their money back. Um, and I think a really disturbing fact is that it seems that our own city government seems to be playing a role in supporting them in doing so. I think a key example is Stony Run, Stony Run is the largest complex covered by E T P A here in the city of Kingston. It's a two hundred sixty six units and the landlords, along with our mayor, have been working to deregulate the entire complex based off a very flagrantly illegal uh, conception, which is that E T P A only covers individuals and not units, which is just not factual. And the, and they're, what they're trying to say is that if they take this out of E T P A, the city will somehow support tenants and uphold their rights. But tenants today can't even get the city to intervene on basic issues such as water, you know, coming through the ceiling or waste coming through the bathtubs. And if they cannot uh, do that, do those things, I don't know how they intend to enforce the fifteen percent rent reduction that we just won in the highest court in New York. The other dish goes well beyond our city government, where as we've discussed already, um, one of the bigger issues is that our state department, which is supposed to be overseeing rent stabilization around the state, has done everything they can to not do anything. Many tenants have filed many different complaints, many different forms, most of them have been rejected or forgotten. Um, and now we're in a position where tenants and to get their fifteen percent rent reduction, which we fought so hard for, have to go through D H C R to win that money back. And there's nothing that D H C R has done in the last several years that indicates that they are at all interested in actually making this a reality. Every step of the way, they have said, oh, well, we can't actually enforce anything because there's pending litigation. Well, the litigation is no longer pending, we won. And now it is time for the state to do its job and support tenants. And so I, I, my first ask for all of you is to maintain, I, you know, a zero percent rent, rent or increase or rent adjustment, but more importantly for D H C R, I am asking D H C R to reject the exemption, exemption application submitted by the landlords and supportive of the city government. And I am asking D H C R to create a clear process for tenants to be able to win their rent reduction. And the thing I'll end with is that there's only one way that ultimately we will be, tenants will be able to win their rights, is by organizing, right? Both landlords and the state will only be responsive if tenants organize and have power together. And so if you're at home or if you're today, I urge you to organize, thank you so much.
Thank you too. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Arlene, take care. Little bit. There is something going around and I encourage all of us to take good care of our house. Questions for June?
Yeah, June, could you uh, repeat again your asks for D H C R?
Uh, my first ask is for D H C R to reject the exemption, exemption application submitted by Acre Properties, which are the landlord's Stony Run Apartments and supported by the mayor of the city. And then my second ask is to create a clear and concise process by which tenants can apply for and receive fifteen percent rent reductions without having to wait for months on end.
And have you um, had in your, as a tenant organizer, have you had experience helping tenants um, or hearing about tenants applying for the, uh, sorry, submitting a um, overcharge complaint and not hearing back or having trouble using the portal?
Absolutely, I mean, yeah, the portal issues have been well discussed already. Um, I'll just say that, you know, in the wake of us winning the rent production, or initially in twenty twenty two, I held a series of clinics um, and a lot of attempts to support tenants in filling out fair market rent appeals as well as trying overcharge complaints. Uh, basically, no one has received their money back and in many cases, D H C R has just pretended like those applications never went in, which is why it is so important that there is a much more clear and concise process uh, for tenants to be able to win their rent reduction. Because we simply cannot be waiting years and years on end um, for the state department to do its job.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd like to ask you about organizing, however, we're going to keep it to the rent increase.
Appreciate that, Carol.
Thank you, June, thank you. Amanda Treasure. I want to encourage other folks who have not yet signed up to speak, who would like to, to put your name on the list.
Hello, I'm Amanda Treasure, I live at three oh five Harley Avenue, Stony Run, I've been living here, there for almost nineteen years with my husband who's on disability and my son, who has always known this as his home. I was working for the state of New York, serving the people in New York for twenty years until I was forced to retire due to my cancer diagnosis. For the past several years, my rent went from eleven twenty five to fourteen fifty. The fourteen fifty rent is forty two percent of my monthly income. The definition of rent burdens, burdening is paying more than thirty percent of your income to rent and utilities. My landlord has also not reduced my rent following the board's negative fifteen percent reduction. It's always a long wait to get repairs done, which should not be the case when rent is paid on time each month. I am calling on the board to pass a rent freeze to prevent rents from increasing further, to help me and my neighbors to stay in our homes. I grew up in Kingston and now with my cancer diagnosis, I also have to deal with not having a home in the town. I grew up in Kingston and now with my cancer diagnosis, I also have to deal with not having a home in the town I grew up in. It's really unfair. I wanted to thank the RGB for hearing me and calling on D H C R to properly investigate and enforce relevant violations of New York State housing laws. Also for D H R to enforce the rent reductions, open an office in Kingston and to make our reforms relevant to Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Uh, question, any questions?
Um, have you uh had um filed a complaint with D H C R?
I have.
And what was that process like for you?
Well, a lot of it was done for me due to my cancer diagnosis and having treatments and doing all that. The lawyer who's I'm on the case with that she's been doing a lot of the stuff for me. I've been bringing this stuff down to her and she's been doing that for me, thankfully.
Yeah.
Because I was not able to do all that, you know, because I've been dealing with my cancer diagnosis for now over a year.
Yeah.
You know, so it's been and it's been rough, you know, with having that. And then on top of all that, I'm worrying about, am I gonna really have a place to live or am I gonna have to like move out of the town that I've lived in my old life?
Yeah. And have you heard back from D H C R?
No. Alls we keep getting, like the other young lady spoke of, is just more paperwork to fill out for the same information that they that we keep giving them. And then nothing to rectify the situation. So they need to do what they need to do and make things happen. And we do need to have somebody to enforce the landlords to do their fifteen percent rent reduction, because they're not gonna do it on their own if if it's up to them to do it. And so.
Thank you so much.
I I I just was confused, um Amanda, about your rent going from eleven twenty five to fourteen fifty. Is that right before ETPA was enforced?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and and that's what it's been ever since, not gone down. Obviously, they can't raise it because it has put a rent freeze on it. You know, and that's what we need to have, because that's what they're trying to do, is just raise everybody's rent so that they could put other people that can pay higher rents in that spot. And that's not fair to us who have been living here forever, you know, just not fair.
No, it's not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jack Bechtel.
Hi, everybody. I'm from uh, you really should have put this over there, you know. Okay?
I I appreciate your being careful and uh yeah, let's keep our injury count to zero.
Okay.
Like, and if you could lift that up towards towards your mouth.
There you go.
Yeah, and get close to it.
Uh, my name is Jack Becktole and I live in Dutch Village, Kingston. Um, we're speaking here today because we have a number of situations in Dutch Village that haven't been attended to. I'll try to go to someone, but it's boring to listen to them. Tenants have received renewals, okay? Some will have not. And in receiving them in in advance, and of course, there's no reduction. Fifteen percent was supposed to be a positive reduction, right? Okay, that's number one. Uh, evictions are ignored by the lack of rent. Uh, that's one of the most important things to uh prevent eviction and it's not used. Reduction when uh of the episode. The eviction process is uh one of the things that is not listed as reasons for eviction. Okay, and it should be. Uh, we have many breakages in the in the community. Uh, air conditioning broken, many units. And the replacement window units, which are not well, not nearly as much as this unit would be. Um, the pool hasn't been open for six years, with except for two weeks. They had the fuels to respond. We are seniors on fixed income. Now you can't, we can't do it. Okay, we live in uh close to our our building to pay. Uh, I suppose. Yeah, you're back from going over there. I'm sorry. Um, just from one of the things in the interior, uh, there's mold in the unit. My wife had uh allergies. They don't seem to want to do anything about it. We cannot afford an increase from seventeen hundred dollars. We've uh we've been given three increases over six years. Uh, we've had interior damage with the, I was given fifteen hundred dollars before we rented it for a month. Because that's what they were supposed to renovate the apartment. They didn't do it. They never gave me that fifteen hundred dollars. The car, the common areas are largely not attended. The landlords have abandoned the property. Six years ago, we moved in. It was a nice place to live. Now it's not. Guess that's all I have. Yeah.
Thank you, Jackie.
I have a question. Yeah, I I was a little confused. You gave the landlord fifteen hundred dollars to do re- renovations before you moved into the apartment?
I lost the fifteen hundred.
And they just did nothing and they did no renovations?
And as a result, things are breaking down.
That's awful.
You know. Thank you.
Oh, um.
Uh, sorry, Jack. We've got another question, but okay.
Here's another question. So did you, you 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 said that you haven't received a rent renewal or you haven't received a lease?
That's right. Our renewal has not been sent to us, but to others, and there's no reduction in our rent.
So you don't currently have a a lease or or?
Oh, yeah, we would accept our lease become in July.
Uh huh.
Okay, that's okay, but others are receiving a lease before the rent comes or the lease comes to.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I missed this part of that.
Oh, no, no, that's not.
Um, I I'm sorry. Uh, um, thank you, Jack. Uh, Ray Soto.
Little hi.
Yes, please.
Everyone here?
Uh, perfect.
Good. Why we should vote for zero rented inputs? Good afternoon to the members of the RGB board. Uh, my name is Renero Soto. I live in Stony Run. I'm a resident and an ETPA tenant. Moves from New York City looking for rent relief. Only to find a shortage of housing ins in the Kingston area. We were able to find an apartment after searching and seeing and hearing about how we the rents were gonna be equivalent to New York City. Uh, we were able to find a one bedroom apartment in Stony Run. Thank you for passing the rent freeze the past two years. It has helped me and other tenants with other costly items like food, utilities, internet, car and other payments. While my rent is within the thirty percent of my income, when you include the other costs, it puts a financial strain on my fixed income. I retired last year. Rents are still high and building maintenance has declined. Landlord is still pushing back on the rent overcharge ruling that was approved by the appellate court. When will tenants see this money? We don't know when this fifteen percent reduction on current rent or prior rent compensation for ETPA tenants will occur. I filed with D H C R the rent overcharge, but seems it was pushed away or consolidated with other forms and applications that we had sent in, especially for the overcharge and some of the mistakes that D H C R's made on on the the actual rent, which at one point, when they sent the initial rent registration form, they included um garbage and sewage in the base rent. And we had to have them retract that from the actual base rent. So um, that was a whole process as well. Um, so until we get the fifteen percent reduction in rent, we urge the RGB board to vote for zero percent increase for this coming year. And that is our, that is my position as a tenant and ETPA tenant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Any questions?
Right. Have you received a um a lease in the last several years?
Um, when ETPA was passed, we did not receive a new rent um lease. They did make an attempt to send out a rent renewal, which we were advised not to sign. And other tenants in were pretty afraid in Stony Run and they did sign it. And I don't know exactly what happened to them, but we didn't sign it. And um, so for now, we're still living, we still have our twenty 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 rent that um that was, that's been frozen for the last couple of years. So, yeah. Any anything else?
Um, have you ever missed a rent payment?
Never missed a rent payment.
What do you think would happen if you did?
Well, they're actually pretty strict. You know, one thing is if you miss a day, they'll they they really start to notify you and they even have like this fee that if you that you have to pay. So you know, you almost don't wanna get into that that area of of missing your rent payments. And we haven't missed a rent payment, you know, I haven't because we really want this this whole situation to pass through, but this fifteen percent rent reduction, I think, has got everybody confused, because we don't really know when that will take effect. Right? When, yeah, do we have to refill, fill out additional forms for the H C R, you know, to respond? And I agree with the tenants that have come here to speak, that it's important that we open, they open an office here so that they could have, we could have representation instead of, you know, receiving giant thick manila envelopes with lawyer litigations. And I mean, it's just overwhelming that, you know, we don't, that's really not our area of expertise to deal with those kind of situations. So as uh as individuals, we we really would like the H C R to have a presence here and and help the tenants through this whole process so that we can finally get what we deserve.
And can you say again, you said you did submit an overcharged complaint, but what was the response from?
Well, it was actually bundled up with the whole um la- landlord uh litigation with the with the courts. So while they sent back all of these legal documents, they they would have our names listed there saying that we did, they did have us on record for filing this overcharge. And all they kept saying is, you need to resubmit your your rent payments for for the years that you've been living in Stony Run. And you kind of do that repetitively every time until we finally, with Marcy, she says, you don't have to do that. It's already been submitted. We'll take care of it. And they were doing sort of like a bulk submission instead of having to have tenants do this individually, which we were doing initially. So um, so that's how, pretty much how we proceeded and and we're still waiting, so.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Bridget Bador.
Hello. My name is Bridget Bador. I'm a renter at one oh six Maiden Lane in Kingston. I have lived in this apartment for three years. I am an ETPA tenant, which I was only made aware of by talking to someone who put money. I have assumed for the last three years that the ETPA laws that I was hearing about do not apply to me. I've been nervous to rock the boat in my building. A one-page mailer, as Jenna mentioned, would be incredibly meaningful to tenants like me who don't know that they are owed a rent reduction. My rent is twelve fifty for a one-bedroom, which includes a fifty percent pet fee. It is roughly thirty-five percent of my partner and I's combined monthly income before taxes. We are both contract workers with freelance jobs every month-to-month and do not cover benefits like health insurance, which we pay out of pocket for. We are lucky to have been able to cover our expenses month-to-month. We have exhausted the money we have in our savings from the person in Kingston. My partner and I are both looking for more steady work in order to save money to start a family, which we are not able to do in our current circumstances. We feel stuck in a broken system. If our rent were to increase, we'd be clamoring to find the extra money each month. This is a universal experience that's talked about between us and our peers. People are already struggling to make their rent each month, which is why today I'm calling on the rent guidelines board to vote to freeze rents. Our rent fortunately has not increased since my partner and I first signed our lease in May twenty twenty two. However, we have not been aware of possible rent reductions. We took over the lease from the tenant before us who was paying one thousand dollars a month. We originally signed a month-to-month lease with Sandy Property Management and the building was listed for sale shortly after. In December twenty twenty three, we signed a one-page tenant assault certificate transferring our lease to the new property owner, Paul LaCouch. We have not received a lease renewal since May twenty twenty two, nor have you received the twelve-page ETPA rider. None of my neighbors know that they have ETPA protections. I did not receive the legally mandated ETPA rider with my lease, and I know that my neighbors that have moved into the building this year did not either. As far as I know, none of my neighbors have received this legally mandated ETPA rider. The only reason I can think of this is because my landlord doesn't want me or my neighbors to know that we have protections. I have not received the RR one form either, which I'm told is required by D H C R. Why is my landlord not held accountable? I'm calling on the Department of Housing and Community Renewal to open a Hudson Valley office of the tenant protection unit since statute eight of the ETPA law states that an office needs to be in every county with ETPA and enforce the ETPA, including rent reduction, which would make a huge difference in so many lives in Kingston. I would like to say, thank the board for listening to me and I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you. Uh, any questions?
That was pretty comprehensive.
Thank you.
Have you filed a complaint um with D H C R?
No, I kind of just found out about this a week ago.
Um, and has your apartment been maintained or upgraded while you've been there?
No, we haven't had any upgrades. Um, it was maintained. We haven't really asked for much, but taken it. Not used to receiving payments. We lived in New York for a while before this, so.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Uh, Lindsay Duval.
Good afternoon. My name is Lindsay Duval. I live at twelve Cleanberg Avenue. I'm a homeowner and I've been living in Kingston for twelve years and I'm speaking as a resident. Um, I wanna thank the Rent Guidelines Board for volunteering your times, be on this board and go through this process and um spending this beautiful Saturday afternoon here and listening to tenants and other directly impacted people. Um, I myself am not directly impacted by this issue. It would be really easy for me to skip out on this meeting. But I want you all to know that homeowners like me want to have a diverse community and low-income renters are absolutely a part of that. And I wanna thank every brave tenant that spoke today that is covered by ETPA uh for sharing their story and risking their housing stability to be at this meeting and to speak up on behalf of themselves and their viewers. The housing crisis that's affecting Kingston and our entire country has been decades in the making. Rents have spiked dramatically here since the pandemic, forcing long-term residents to be priced out of their community, disconnecting them from family, friends, jobs and other community supports. Housing instability, evictions and rising rates of now homelessness erode our entire community. I'm proud to live in a city that is helping, that is trying to tackle this crisis from many different angles. Uh, while tenant protections like rent stabilization are just one way to stabilize the market, it's important that the city use all of its available tools to do so. Um, I'm severely disappointed to hear how few landlords are actually following the law that aren't complying with the twenty twenty two rent reduction and haven't been um freezing rents or informing their tenants about their rights and um are not really, are not adequately maintaining their properties. It's really discouraging and disappointing. Um, so I hope the H C R is listening and um I do want to stand with the tenants today and call for another rent freeze. Call on the Department of Housing and Community Renewal to open a Hudson Valley office of the tenant protections to enforce to enforce ETPA, which is clearly not going very well in Kingston. Um, and again, wanna thank the Rent Guidelines Board for listening to tenants who are directly impacted by this decision.
Thank you. I I want to encourage you, uh, I don't I don't know if we have any questions, but I do want to encourage you to email your comments which were substantive and detailed to uh the email address that is on the notice. And that goes, that goes for everybody in this room. We appreciate getting comments in writing as well as here.
You got it. Were there any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
How long do you expect these statements through email?
That's a great question. Let's say end of the day Monday.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we will, we will uh, enthusiastically accept written comments until the end of the day Monday. And Kenneth?
Pickwick.
Pickwick.
I'm gonna move this over because I have spinal stenosis and if I stand, uh, it gets painful.
Perfect, I appreciate you taking the accommodations you need.
All right, so, good. What I'm here for is uh, to give you a snapshot of what was, what's happening at Stony Run over the years. Um, my name is Kenneth Pickwick and I have lived at three oh five Hurley Avenue, also known as Stony Run. In Kingston since two thousand and eleven. Now, in the period from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and eighteen, my rent for the one-bedroom apartment went from seven fifty. To seven ninety-five. Um, so obviously it was increased after that, so. In twenty twenty-two, I spent long hours collecting all of my past rent checks. Since two thousand and nineteen because D H C R needed that information from my F M R A. So what I did, I had all those. I collected all of them and what I did, uh, this is all of them right here. And what I did was I actually took it down to Gertz Plaza where the rent control is. Because I used to live around the corner, um, then with Expressway. And I got a docketing acknowledgement, which has the number here. So this is substantiated, so this is like a snapshot of what happened there. So my partner passed away in two thousand and eighteen, my partner of forty-five years. So I was on my own doing this stuff because he was a journalist and a very extemporaneous speaker. And he would just rattle everything up, so I'm just trying to do my best. So uh, this is what happened. Instead of general, this is exactly what happened. So then uh, over those three years, my rent went from. September two thousand and nineteen, it was seven ninety-five. And that was when we had the Larry Moore Organization who owned Stony Run and then sold. And so we had a, a number of people who came in to try and follow it up and they were nowhere near close looking after the buildings. And uh, they had a fantastic staff there that whole time and they, they were knowledgeable because they were the original people there. So, um, let me just get that for this. Uh, so over those three years, the September two thousand and nineteen was seven ninety-five. October of twenty twenty-two, it's one thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars for that apartment. So I can't figure out the rent increase, so I asked Siri and she couldn't answer it, but she didn't get able to figure it out. So it's actually fifty-eight point six one six four. That's how detailed we were, so it, that was the rate, rent increase that, now I have social security.
Sorry, Kenneth, you are past the time limit, but I, with, with the board's permission, I'd love to let you continue for a minute.
Yeah, because Stony Run is an important factor here.
So.
So let me just run through this to you, at least I get the satisfaction of seeing this all come to fruition, this is the fifteen percent. I feel sorry for all the older tenants that were hurt by those abnormal rent increases when COVID was running rampant and house prices and rental prices increased by. Thirty-five percent when a lot of people exited the larger southern cities coming up northward. Uh, driving up the prices here because they can work at home, whatever. Many of my neighbors moved because they were intimidated and confused by the landlord's increases and vague letters. That's why I'm so thankful to this board for voting for the rent reduction in twenty twenty-two and subsequent rent freezes. Now we need D H C R to hold these landlords accountable, enforce ETPA, and reject the deregulation request from Stony Run's landlords.
Thank you, um, can I ask you to email your, your full comments as much as you've got written down to the board's email address? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, because I have everything here, this is all the original stuff from Gertz Plaza. And that I spoke about the Manila envelopes they send you, I mean, forget about it, okay, forget about it.
Um, other questions?
Could you say again, um, the, how much your rent um, was in twenty twenty-two?
Um, in twenty twenty-two, because it's all right here, it, it buried here. But here it was seven ninety-five for July, August, and September of twenty nineteen. And then when you go to the last three year, um. Uh, October, October twenty twenty-two, it was one thousand two hundred and sixty-one. And November twenty twenty-two, one thousand two hundred and twenty-four. So it's all substantiated here because I have the check numbers and everything. And it's validated on the docket number, so they have it there, so it's not disputed.
There is a, there seems to be a, a dis dispute in the numbers between um, months. Uh, are you continuing to pay uh, the twelve twenty?
Right now I pay twelve twenty-four and I have a storage uh, unit that someone broke into mine while. I was a caregiver down in Palm Beach, Florida for two years. So when I came back and I looked at my storage unit, someone cut the loft off and took my stuff out. So, so I, I had to find one that was empty and make sure that, that, because there was stuff in there with the old. Big heavy Sony TV, so I knew it was a long time, so I was able to get that and they charged forty dollars in my rent. I had mice issues in, they looked after that, uh, actually just coming in. In when I, because I, I, I look after houses in the Hamptons, two of my favorite customers. And when I came home, I have rice games that were here, the, the mice came under the sink, got in the shedrock. And found them and ate the rest of them, so they, they looked after that. The, the, the new people that are there are, are, I like them, they're, they're responsible. Because they, this is part of the Rose Associates, so this is the management team. Because the previous management team was, was non-existent. And I even wash out the, where the um, where the garbage is, um. I'm a, you know, I, I, I look after people's houses, so I went in there and I have a hose there and I wash it out. And I put a bag inside the laundry room so people can put the lint in there. But the thing is, it has to work on both sides, you have to have the tenants. They're responsible for this, this is their place, okay? And you have to respect your neighbors in the building and do the right thing. And it's on both sides, also for the landlords, this is the building before nineteen seventy-four, so it has a lot of problems. I had two burst copper pipes, which, which were, were in my apartment. So the landlords need to do, i- i- it, for the money they spend to fix everything up. They need to get a, a rebate or, or be able to double charge what their expenses are. Because it's a lot, so I can see from their perspective how it's, you know, coming up on them. And decreasing their margin, so they need a tax break, whatever it is, to look after it properly. So if they spend two hundred and fifty thousand a year to do it, then they get a, it's, it's increased to five hundred thousand. And this way it gives them some type of break, you have to work on both sides. And that's what this whole thing is going on in this country. You need to work on both sides with rational people who just want to get it done and do the right thing. And I've thought that my whole life because I've looked at thousands of houses down in Great Neck and Manhasset. And if you don't do the right thing, then you're out.
Amen, uh, thank you, thank you so much, uh, another question?
Next question, did you realize that your landlord has received thirty-five million dollars for the workforce housing?
Yeah, I, I've heard those figure, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know this, and the nonprofit thing. Uh, by definition, Stony Run is an apartment complex. By definition, Webster's dictionary, a nonprofit organization, they ain't that.
I have one last question, is the storage included in your rent?
Well, they charge forty dollars a month now, which is reasonable, they used to charge the, a smaller amount.
So you pay twelve twenty-four and then plus the?
Yeah, and I get sixteen hundred in my social security, so when I have my Medicare Plan B. My social security is gone, so I'm seventy-three years old and I still do side work down in the Hamptons for, because I used to have a business down there. So, but it, but it's hard the way they, they increase that and i- and then when you have the increase in the rent. And the decrease in looking after the place, then you know, it's not the right balance.
Thank you so much.
Were you compensated for the loss of your things from the, a broken walkout in the storage?
No.
No. And previous to uh, it was twenty-five dollars, right?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was lower, but just the mere fact that they don't have an organization to go through the whole place. Because obviously when you have a smaller apartment like I do, you don't want to have luggage bags and certain things in there, you, so you need a unit like that. To make your, your, your apartment not, not crowded. So, and, and the thing is, I, I love Stony Run, I want to stay there for twenty years. Because with my back condition, it's four J and I just walk up and I walk right in. So I know down the road what I'm expecting, so I'm looking ahead and I want to protect myself. So my main worry here is, can I stay there and will I have problems speaking of that, that I'm gonna lose my apartment? And with my partner forty-five years, if you went into it, there are pictures and memorabilia, it's stuffed with it. And the move would be a tragedy for me. So I just want to stay there and I, and I love the place, it's a very nice place. And the thing is, you know, all this stuff here, um. Kingston is a nice, kind place and why can't, you know, you, you just have people together, the landlords and this, and make it a happy place?
I think that's a beautiful place then, thank you so much.
One more question though, was your, was your storage originally included in your rent?
I really don't know way back when, but I, I think it probably was. Because you had to have your number on there, Jay, and you had to have your lock. And so, so I don't know, there are two hundred and sixty-seven units and I doubt they have that many storage.
I've been there for nineteen years and it used to be included and now they're charging that and twenty-five dollars for garbage.
All right, we're gonna wrap this up, thank you.
The point is that they're the, uh, they're not supposed to charge, landlords not supposed to charge for um, services that were included previously, so.
Yes.
Right, it's just they, they don't, they don't have the, 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 the people or the staff there. You just do all these extra little things and two people, three people that are work there now are very nice, very nice to me. And uh, and they're, they're good people, but obviously they have to answer to the people up you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael Tierney.
Do you want me to stand or serve?
I would love me to do so. Yeah.
Just want to sit down. I'll stand, I'll stand. Is this okay?
Raise it higher and get closer.
We miss you on the board.
But I might get to talk. Uh, thank you members of the Rent Guidelines Board for your work, uh, my name is Michael Tierney, uh, I'm an ETK tenant, I reside at twenty-five John Street, apartment number two. And I serve as the alternate of the second ward on the city council. Uh, this board has a history of making careful determinations after serious deliberation and examining data provided by HCR as well as by tenants. Uh, there, you have gotten information from landlords, but there has been a serious pattern of non-compliance and contempt for this process. Rather than provide economic data uh, about their actual costs and have an open and honest conversation about their operating income. They would rather take to the courts, threaten city employees, and waste city staff time in frivolous lawsuits. Knowing that the, the decisions that you make are legally justified and morally righteous. Um, in addition to the contempt and non-compliance they show for this process, they also show that in the day-to-day operations of their apartments here in the city of Kingston. For example, I have lived in my apartment since twenty twenty-one, I have not had a lease since twenty twenty-two, I have never actually been informed I'm an ETK tenant. Uh, maybe they just assume that I know because I was on the board, but um, they've also, I just got a new neighbor last week, they never told him that he has. That we are an ETK building, um, and I believe they have started charging him for parking, which is uh. In violation as we never paid for parking before and I've had to previously uh, fight with them over that. My landlord, or at least the management company, is the same company that operates Chestnut Mansion and Dutch Village. Um, they have, every anytime a building manager learns the law and sits down and wants to have it explained to them by me or by another tenant. And starts trying to enact the law and the decisions made by this board, they are fired. Um, they fired Jess, they fired Jen, we have a new building manager who, uh, Kevin, who's really great and responsive now for the first time. I'm sure they're not paying him well enough, um, and I have not bothered to sit down to tell him the law because I want him to keep his job. Um, uh, so the data that you have, that have been provided shows that uh. You should pass a zero percent rental adjustment for one and two-year leases, so I urge you to do that. And I also urge that you demand HCR to assist uh, myself and fellow tenants in receiving their neg, their overdue negative fifteen percent rental adjustment. Which has never been provided for at least my building and most of my constituents' buildings, uh, as well as the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Michael, uh, any questions?
Uh, could you also submit that to uh, our email address?
Sure.
So you can refer back to it in our closing statements.
I like that there's a chorus here, um, other questions?
Have you filed a complaint with the HCR?
Uh, I filed one in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Um, I was under the impression, I, I've never heard back formally from HCR. Um, it was my understanding that they were not taking any of those overcharged complaints into account while the um. Hudson Valley Proper, Property Owners Association continued their frivolous lawsuit against the city of Kingston and this board. Um, but now that has been decided as of Tuesday that the board was correct in their determination. Uh, but I've never actually gotten any kind of receipt of those overcharged forms.
Uh, I, I just want to comment that they told me during our processes that my, um, that it had just been. Um, put aside because it was not valid during that, I think they said it was um, deleted. Because it was not valid while we were in litigation.
Yeah, and I, I've stayed in my same apartment, I've wanted to move to a larger apartment in the building, but I was worried that moving would maybe. Make me ineligible for the negative rental adjustment. Um, being that I've never heard any actual guidance from HCR about, or assistance from them about what. That actually entails and what our rights are as ETK tenants. And, and I, I guess like in a larger section, like the word that we've heard over and over again today is afraid and fearful. Um, and we are tenants with stronger protections than other tenants in the city, um, and. The landlord class wants to keep it that way because when we're scared, we fight back less. We're not doing that anymore.
I have a question, um, I know you said you haven't received a lease, have you received the twelve-page ETK rider? Not even the one pager?
I have never actually been informed ever that I am ETK tenant.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Chelsea Valava.
Hey, everybody. My name is Chelsea Diadba. I live in the Parkview Terrace apartment complex at five Millers Lane, apartment five A. And I support the rent reduction you've previously decided and the continuation of rent stabilization. I'm a community social worker and I live in a rent-run stabilized unit. I was just informed of being an ETPA, uh, building this past lease renewal cycle to my knowledge. I pay forty percent of my monthly income in rent to remain housed, while also financially supporting my nephew and two younger sisters. It is important to note that when I moved in, I also had to pay a broker's fee equivalent to one month's rent. Today, I along with thousands of tenants across the city and country, I'm on this paycheck away from falling behind on rent and facing eviction. Any increase to my current rent will make it unaffordable for me to remain in my home. Rent has doubled, yet wages have stayed the same, and inflation continues to skyrocket everyone's living expenses, including that of food and utilities. The recent study you've seen shows that property holders have increased profits and decreased expenditures, while many long-term and generational residents have been pushed out and displaced from their homes right here in the city. Too many tenants do not know their rights, let alone have the confidence and knowledge to navigate, pursue an appropriate legal action if they haven't yet been around the block like the experienced tenants in this audience. Some of the housing rights advocacy work I've done has been bridging people and families to local resources, like the legal services of the Hudson Valley and sharing information on their rights. But of course, I'm not an attorney, so you do what you can. Um, housing is a human right. Housing is basic mental health care. It is critical for any body representing the city government and making decisions that directly impact our community members' lives to prioritize public health. When I moved in, the property manager allowed for maintenance workers to enter my apartment without my knowledge or permission. Additionally, in my lease renewal packet, this month, the Parkview Terrace Department Property Management Company erroneously stated in a letter that they have the right to change the lease if ETP goes away. This points to tactics that landholders use to manipulate and exploit renters. The earlier speaker, Ken, also made the point that it is unpaid labor, time, and effort by renters to find years' worth of documents that should be filed and kept by any property management company that assumes ownership of the complex. Finally, I'll bring your attention to the living situations I've learned of in Stony Run while speaking with my neighbors. I've heard people suffering life-altering medical conditions due to mold in their homes. I've heard of unrepaired holes, dangerous entrances in sidewalks, and precipitous and frozen weather, weeks of heat not working, and trash removal delays. I've also met a single parent, um, who was getting evicted, um, and would have to leave their home, uh, where they felt safe in. Uh, in in talking with my neighbors, and, um, that story really stays with me. A local organizer and good friend of mine who lives in Stony Run apartment complexes in the process of moving immediately due to unlivable conditions in her apartment. She has a leak that has become unmanageable. And she's getting a charged appropriated rental rate right now, this month. She couldn't be here with more, I'm not gonna mean. She couldn't be here with more information because she's working two to three jobs right now to keep paying rent and staying housed. Thanks for listening.
Thank you so much.
I I didn't, I didn't understand what the fee was that you had to pay, uh, the equivalent of a month's rent for what?
Uh, broker's fee.
Brokers?
Yeah, in order to move in. Uh, that was just something I thought was worth noting. Um, I think New York City is in the process of or have already passed, uh, maybe that whoever hires the broker, they have to pay that fee, but that's not the case in City of Kingston. So that's a further hurdle for renters to acquire housing.
Other questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Yeah. And again.
Email.
Thank you. Shay Kessler.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, my name is Shay Kessler. I live at one oh four Fairmont Avenue in Kingston. I have been a tenant there since twenty-twenty-three. Uh, I am not in an ETPA building, but I'm here, um, to stand with, um, ETPA tenants. I'm also a care manager and for my employment, and part of that is navigating housing for some vulnerable populations, folks who have chronic conditions, who are on Medicaid. And I think it does go without saying that a lot of us are here because we all admit that we have a housing crisis. And it's not just in Kingston, it is the rest of the country. And it always seems to be some of the most vulnerable populations impacted the most by decisions to adopt a lease. Um, I work with families who are trying to navigate Section Eight, where Section Eight waitlists are closed, where they're not able to, um, find equitable employment to support their own families, to find housing. There are families with, indeed, these situations that they cannot afford to leave and they're forced to stay with their abusive partners to have housing because like DBC, DB shelters are not accessible. So I've got families in Ulster County who can't afford to move because the rent is too high for a family of five. So I urge the board to hold landlords accountable and not just ask for the rent freeze, but we can do better with, you know, decreasing the rent more than fifty percent. Because, you know, these are folks who absolutely deserve to, um, you know, their basic needs met, just like anyone else, no gifts, no buts. Thank you.
Thank you, Shay. Um, questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Josephine French.
Excuse me. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Josephine French and I live at Stony Run since October twenty-twenty-four. I live in apartment six L. I have later learned that it was an ETPA building. However, I was not given an ETPA lease. The person before me was paying twelve-hundred-and-fifty a month, and I am paying eighteen-fifty a month for an unimproved apartment. When my husband died in February, I asked about a rent reduction because of my income being cut in half. I was told, no, I'm going to be seventy years old. It's hard to move this time in October. Now they want me to do it again. This apartment is definitely not worth eighteen-fifty a month. In the end of September twenty-twenty-four, my husband and I were informed that he will have to have his right leg amputated above the knee. So we had to move from where we were, living because of stairs. So my granddaughter was already living here, and I take care of my grandson when she is working. I applied to Stony Run, not knowing about the pervasive problems here. I knew there was an accessible apartment for me and my husband, so I rented it sight unseen. Maybe that wasn't a great idea, but we were desperate seniors who don't have choices. After my application fee was taken and I was approved, I was told how bad the condition was. They needed three weeks to make it habitable, according to management. When we moved in, this is what we found. All the mover doors in the apartment were off track. None were cleaned. Uh, they were rusted and not painted and still had crayon and marker all over them. The bathroom and kitchen were not caulked and both sinks were missing drain covers as well as the tub. There was mold, uh, building up at that time. The vents in the bathroom and the kitchen were filthy and loud or broken. All the ca- all the counters in the kitchen were sticky because they removed contact paper from them, but didn't remove the glue. One of the cabinets was missing a door, so they attached a random mismatched one instead. There were knobs missing on most of the drawers as well and a shelf completely missing from the cabinet. The primary bedroom windows were disgusting, as well as the windowsill. Dirt and leaves had been blowing in the windows because the windows didn't fit properly. I was told they will not fix. Second bedroom has the same problem with the windows, except there is a missing storm window that was not replaced and on the other window, a broken window pane, which is still not paired. That was the coldest room in the house. Because it was always cold in the back two rooms, they had to have a contractor come in to see why the heat was not coming through the vents enough to warm the rooms. He checked the thermostat and then went to the utility room and told me that the ducts are no good, and that is why I'm not getting enough heat from the vents. He said he was going to report this to management that the ducts need replacing, but again, nothing is being done. I have COPD, as did my husband, and since the living room windows are unable to be opened, there is no ventilation in the house at all because our front windows in our pat- what I thought were patio windows were not. Um, then a few weeks ago, I scolded, was scolded by the water in the shower because the cold water was not going up to the shower. Uh, the air conditioning unit above us actually leaked all over my bed and floor in the bedroom. It was coming down very quickly. They came, uh, but they never came back to fix the plaster or to paint over it and to get rid of the mold. It's, you can already see it's discoloring. Um, I feel the need to tell you this kind of condition I found my apartment in to explain my outrage that DHCR is considering allowing the landlord to deregulate from ETPA. Do you think those are conditions worthy of a top-of-the-market rental rate? I am a senior citizen on a fixed income and cannot afford to move. Beyond that, I want to live close to my family. I enjoy my community and just wish we were all treated with dignity and respect. I appreciate the board's time and hearing me out. I hope the DHCR will enforce the good decisions the board has lawfully made.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate it and sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Um, Greg McCullough.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Greg McCullough, Ulster County legislator. I'm a homeowner now, but I've been for a number of years. I'm me, I'm here with this organization. As legislator, I'm always out amongst the people. I spend a lot of time with our most vulnerable, especially the homeless population. When I speak with them, a majority of them state that housing instability and rising rents are what contributes to their homelessness. We know that housing instability coupled with rising evictions is what's eroding our community. In addition to that, increased rents to ETPA buildings lead to rising rents everywhere. My frustration is that is Kingston landlords have not complied with the recent decision that affirmed that the rent reduction passed by this board guideline in November twenty-twenty-two. I'm calling for the rent guideline board to vote to not only freeze rents, but apply it to the November twenty twenty-two rent reduction. Sure you'll ask me about that. I'll be, finally, I'm calling on the Department of Housing and Community Renewal to establish a Hudson Valley Office um, of the Tenant Protection Unit and enforce the ETPA, including the rent reduction. Although I'm a legislator, I'm not representing that today. I'm here as an Ulster County resident, speaking out for my neighbors and and everyone here, uh, because I care. I've rented for many years, so I know what's that like. And, uh, according to some of the rents I've heard, it's more than my mortgage, which is not fair. So let let's do what we need to do and thank you again for, I spoke before for the fifteen percent, uh, reduction. So thanks for that. It's so much more work to do.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, questions? Now, thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yes, please. I love written comments. They, uh, make our job easier for me at least. Um, and thank you, Junior. Uh, we'll send you the the recording. Um, Garrett French.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm more speaking, Jenna asked me to talk because I actually used to be a super for Opus Management, LeChandle, Dutch Village, Chestnut Mansion, Dog, twenty-five John Street, Michael Tierney, I actually talked to him and they actually told me not to work in his apartment after already stating dates. Um, the problem is, the landlords don't want to do anything for the tenants. I got terminated for working for the tenants. They said I was spending too much money by getting violations done. When I took over Chestnut Mansion, I believe I had a hundred and thirty-nine violations that were set up to actually where tenants could have, um, Sarah, who was here before, had a broken door. Her door was bent in half. I ordered the door first week I was there. They canceled the order because it was too expensive. There was other tenants, uh, that were dealing with so much mold, I had to take off total walls and all they did was moan about the cost. The the landlords just don't care about the tenants at all. All they want is to check. I'm even told that I wasn't allowed to talk to tenants because I would discuss things and be like, this is what we have to do. This is what, this is the repairs you need done. They wanted as minimal to do. I was with Michael Friedman, who's actually the managing agent for Opus in the area. We're in an apartment and I was going over with a tenant. I knew exactly what was wrong with it because of violations, I remember in the back of my head. We're going over it and it's like, don't add stuff. If she's not adding it, don't fix it. Don't tell her she needs it fixed. Meanwhile, she already has the complaints in into the system. They just don't care. They don't want anything done. And that's especially just Opus Management from my side that I've seen with Dutch Village and, uh, John Street. There's also other properties that they have. My Chestnut Mansion is one of the worst ones I've ever seen when I walked in. I mean, they had, they had a wall falling down. Literally, the the cavalier was falling off because their car hit it three months before I started and they had no bracing up or anything where that could have fell on anybody. I put the bracing up and they're like, why'd you waste your time doing that? That's the type of dealing that you're dealing with landlords now. And I saw it from their side. We we had a managing agent, Michael Tierney knows Maria. All she did was lie to tenants, ignored them. She would literally tell me, I would be in the office, she would be like, we have to go to the back because a tenant, I don't want to deal with this coming in. She would lock the door, literally walk into the back until she had the ring camera and waited until they left. This way she wouldn't have to deal with tenants. I mean, it's terrible what I saw. There there's tons I could go on for days.
Thank you so much. This is the valuable perspective, I think, for for this board to hear. Um, questions?
Did you ever, um, interact with the landlord about ETPA or the rent reduction?
No, I actually didn't even know it. Jenna was the one who brought it up to me. Um, whenever she went around for stuff, they told me I had to follow her around and take off the signs, which I did do. I actually left them, made sure I left them up for at least forty-eight hours so the tenants had a chance to get them. But I had to kind of listen to the to the bosses, but I thought them being aware was the most important thing.
Yeah.
They fought, they fought it like they they wanted me to keep trespasser from the property at one point. I know. You never heard me say anything about it.
Other questions?
You can email it.
Yeah, yes, I could. I'll make a long format for you and that's not a issue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys have a great day.
You too.
Yeah.
Uh, there is nobody left on our signup sheets. Um, so if, uh, nobody else here wants to talk in person, um, I mean, there's, there's still room on the on the sheet. So, uh, come up, put your name down and then and then start talking.
Great. So we've been, like, there's this one, you know, now I feel, now I feel, I'm sorry, I'll write my last name with that one. Thank you. Three minutes, right?
Uh, yeah, three minutes. Bravon Raga.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, good to see all of you here. My name is Bravon Raga. I'm a board of the many. Um, thank this board for the diligent work and for all the tenants that spoke today. Uh, there's nothing that I could say that would be more impactful than what was said here by ETPA tenants. Tenants who can speak to unaffordable rents, a lack of compliance by landlords and poor maintenance, which necessitates a rent freeze this year. What I can speak to is how difficult this process has been for all of us working in good faith to balance the interests of tenants and landlords and implement this policy. You know, we engaged in a democratic process with multiple public hearings and the common council voted to adopt rent stabilization. Since then, a few bad actors have tried to manipulate this process and undermine this board by staging bad faith lawsuits, trying to strike down ETPA, the legal and justified action. by staging bad faith lawsuits, trying to strike down ETPA, the legal and justified actions of this board, by refusing to comply with ETPA, banking on the fact that those lawsuits would succeed or the state would fail to enforce rent stabilization, by exploiting loopholes like trying to create nonprofits and declare exemptions and try and take their building out of regulation, and by pushing for additional vacancy studies to be conducted in secret to try and inflate the vacancy rate and strike down ETPA. This board has been operating in good faith. Tenants and advocates have been operating in good faith. The common council has been operating in good faith and some of the good landlords have been operating in good faith, but a few bad actors have not. And it's telling that none of them are here. They don't want to engage in an honest or open process. Despite all of that, they keep losing. The highest court in the state sided with tenants and this board and the city and upheld ETPA and the negative rent adjustment. The data has shown again and again that the actions on this board are justified and tenants have been organizing and demanding better conditions with these newfound rights. So despite all of the challenges and all of the difficulties, this board's actions and ETPA have kept tenants in their homes and stabilized rents in Kingston. I urge you to enact a rent freeze again and hold DHCR accountable to enforce rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, yes, nobody has questions? Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, come on up, write your name down.
Um, so I speak.
Sorry, I'm struggling to, struggling to read your first name.
Michelle.
Michelle.
Hughes.
Michelle Hughes. Thank you.
Um, I was thinking from two perspectives. One is uh I grew up in subsidized housing. And for my family, that was a lifesaver. That was, that made everything possible. We, we have to start to look at the larger system of housing in Kingston. Uh, private landlords can't be the only uh horizon for people looking to live in the city. And for me and my brother and my sister and my grandparents who all moved into this building in nineteen sixty-six, it was possible uh to do the kinds of things we never could have done. To go to college, to, you know, go to the doctor. All of those things were possible. When I was twenty-eight in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, I was a teacher. My husband is a carpenter and we were able to buy a house with meager resources. And um to do many things because we could do that. We now have two grown daughters and one who um gave us our first grandchild uh not too long ago. And she and her partner and our grandson are living with us. This is because what we pay in a mortgage for an old gram shackle house, for sure, uh typical for Ulster County, but still. Um, she would be paying for a meager one-bedroom apartment. The, 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 the the framework is off. And uh, you know, every time, every time you think about what it would be like for her to leave and do the thing she wants to do, which is to be independent, we, we, we throw our hands up. She works two jobs and is raising a kid. And is super independent and wants to be on her own. But that is not possible. Uh, because we are paying for our mortgage, which she would be paying for her rent. And uh, I just it's, it's personal and it's also political and it's also um the will of our community to start to really look at this in a serious way. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, seeing nobody else here lined up to speak. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, but first I want to encourage you to send any written comments to the email address kingstonrgb@hcr.ny.gov that is listed on the public notice for this hearing. We will accept written comments until the end of the day Monday. Um, and uh with that, a motion to adjourn?
Well, have we made an official motion to close the public hearing as of Monday?
We have not. We should, we should do that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing as of uh uh end of business by five P M on Monday, the twenty-third.
Um, I second that. Uh, any discussion? Uh, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Junior. I appreciate that attention to detail. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Carol moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Me a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. It is two forty P M on Saturday, June twenty-first, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much to all of you who have. And thank you to my colleagues on the board and uh and to everyone who's watching this on the recording that will figure out how to upload.
General question, and that is, does anybody know if you can still collect, you know, because most landlords are saying that they would reduce your rent by, you know, the the amount that you would have been paying uh for the fifteen percent. Can you still be residing, uh not residing in your apartment and collect your?
That's the Michael Tierney question. Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think that's a great question that we should ask DHCR in writing. Um, but again, I'm gonna stop recording.